Welcome to Wednesday, May fifteen, City Council Budget Work Session number two. Are we recording, Josh? Okay, proud of you for wearing that tiger's hat, even though they haven't scored a run in two days. Yeah, well, me too.
Didn't they upgrade the hats?
Pitching's good, though. Alright, so that was my non-arranged participation. Is there any other non-arranged participation?
Okay. Thank you.
Think in the room, there is anybody online?
No.
Nope. Okay, so we're into discussion of fiscal year budget. I'll turn it over to you, sir.
Sure, so we, um, we covered, uh, general fund last time.
Well, we can take questions from members that weren't here if you need it, if you have any.
You were, your dam was here. What else do we need to worry about?
Oh, we, we, we didn't have the quorum last time, so I mean, that's.
I don't, do you have any?
Look over there, see if they're okay with that one, in case you had a question.
Well, we, we can always ju- jump around like, like we always do. Um, and then, and there really hasn't been much that I've tweaked in the, in the general funds since, since last time. Um, so all that's pretty much the same. Um. Going into roads, uh, I provided the list of roads based on, um, our transportation asset management plan that we developed this last year. Um, so this is the budget implementation of that, and, um, particularly for the current fiscal year and next fiscal year, um, you know, we, we have the bid back for, uh, Baker, we have the bid back for, um, uh, Forest and here on Farms, we have the bid back for Industrial Park and West Ridge. So all of those are, uh, more or less going to be actuals. Um, for next fiscal year, um, the, you know, we, we, we have Baker, here on Farms, Forest Street. All, all that's expected to start very end of June, going into July, so almost all that's gonna take place in the next fiscal year.
So it'll be post by centennial?
Post, but, post by centennial, yeah. So we, we actually had the pre-con for Baker today. And, um, they're anticipating, uh, setting up all of their, um, signage and barrier barricades and all of that on June twenty-third.
Is the weekend up, or is that right now?
Uh, so, uh, like if, if, um, uh.
Today the carnival is done.
Yeah, it's the, the, the day the carnival.
Okay, gotcha.
Yep. Um, but I, I also baked into fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, um, the design of Hudson Street, uh, which is in our TAMP.
Between where and where?
Uh, Hudson, uh, north of Dexter and Arbor. Uh, so Hu- Hudson going towards, uh, Inverness condos.
Yeah, okay, gotcha. Cottonwood Condos.
Or Ca- Cottonwood condos.
Yeah.
Yep. Um, and then I baked in six hundred thousand in the event that we want, uh, the road fund to contribute towards, um, the right-of-way development, um, at eighty-one forty Main Street.
The, you skipped a couple, though. Here in Farms and Forest Street, or are those the ones we don't need?
Those, 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 those are the ones that, uh, that we, we, we've gotten the bids back, I think councils approved those.
Yep, yep, sorry.
Um, so those, those are, those are in process. Um, and then, uh, design of Hudson, design of Dex- Dexter Crossing, Millen overlay.
So how much? I take it from the plan, we already know what areas we're expecting.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead.
Yep.
So, Justin, go- going into next fiscal year, what do you think our fund balance is in the road fund?
So.
So now I've got Murray engaged.
So what, what, what I've tried to do is I've, I've tried to keep the fund balance in major and local low, so that way fund balances, for the most part, is represented through municipal roads fund.
Okay.
Um, and at the end of fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, um, I'm showing five hundred and thirty thousand.
Okay, what is it at the end of, gonna be at the end of this year, projected?
Uh, almost two million. So, so we're, we're pulling a lot from fund balance to fund the next two years of, of TAMP improvements. Um, I did get an email today, um, from Watts to set up a meeting regarding our, uh, small urban area, um, program. Um, so transfer, I, I, I don't know if we transfer or if we continue participating in our, our normal Watts, uh, tip program. But, um, uh, we're gonna be a part of what's called an A-CUB, and it's basically communities that are four thousand to forty thousand, I think it is. And basically, we, we get our own, our own special pot of money, that's like three hundred eighty-five thousand every two years.
I got to vote for that.
Did you?
I was, one of the only meetings I've, well, the only meetings I've made in the last year.
Um.
Good day to stick, sure.
But.
Put me in.
Yeah. I, 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 I thought you'd wanna, wanna be a part of that. Um, tha- that money, I, I, I'm thinking that we will be able to access the first year of that, either next year or the following year. And that is not baked into this.
So, and what would that, and that's for any?
So like the major, major federal aid roads that we would normally have competed with, cap in the, the same bucket as County and Arbor.
Mm-hmm.
Flava, blah, blah.
Like truck.
Yeah, so, so Broad Street, went the wrong way, Broad Street.
Broad.
Uh, central. Up to Third, Third.
Dexter and Arbor.
Dexter and Arbor. Baker.
Baker. Yep.
Danhoy, you have stuff?
Uh, Da- Danhoy is a major, but it is not a federal aid.
Okay.
Um, so, and we, we, we may have to look at, at our program based on that, because I, I don't know that Hudson is either. And, uh, Hudson, I think, is the only major road, um, planned for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. So.
Why is considered to be? Is that just a little truck pro?
Also, so, 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 I mean, that, that, that's, that's just the way it's been designated, so, um, second and fourth are majors, uh, Hudson.
All the striped streets.
For it.
Yeah, and Forest, too. Yeah. Maintain those stripes.
I, I, I don't think Forest is, I, I, I think it's, I think it's Hudson.
Okay.
And then that, that direction, yeah. So.
So that's three hundred fifty-five thousand, so?
Every, every two years.
So is that something that has to be used that year, or?
So, so basically, we, we will put together a application.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, because technically it's a grant program, and so we, we have to put together our application, even though once we submit our application, it's guaranteed that we, that we will get that money.
Sure.
As long as what we apply for meets the requirements. Um, and so, you know, we can basically bank on, on those dollars.
Right, so then does it have to be used the year that it's issued, or is it during the?
What we get to plan for, just like we did the Baker project, you know, we were planning the Baker project, we've known about the Baker funding. Right, so it's the same type of thing, we'll have to identify what it's used for, and then we'll get it added, and we'll get it programmed and.
Well, so that's what I'm saying, if it, let's say it comes in twenty-five, twenty-six, and the only thing we have is Hudson, so that's not applicable. Mm-hmm. Do we need to stick another project on there, or can we say we did?
I, 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 yeah.
Correct.
We should probably right, bite off something on Broad, whatever the downstream end of Broad is.
Maybe. I, you, you just figure out a different project.
I wanna talk around Broad, so. Well, there's a lot to do on Broad, right?
Well, I was wondering, even if we can get this, this storm water done up. That would be huge, and that's a significant amount of money, and then that would relieve Fifth Street storm water, it would relieve Forest Street storm water, and it also would protect our roads a little better, because we got water sitting on the opposite side of Kurt's house all the time. I didn't know.
You mean like curbing gutters, like what's that?
I'm talking, just put the storm in right now and put some catch bait. I don't know if it's a good idea, but I'm just saying that.
Sort of as a first step in.
It's gonna have to be done anyway.
Yeah, and then, and then what I'm picturing with regard to, um, tackling Broad is basically starting here and working our way towards Main Street with whatever funding we can, we can apply towards that.
Well, well, where does the sanitary sewer go? On Broad, doesn't it go down to Fifth, and then Fifth across the tracks and into the, into the planet? So we know we've got issues there, right, because we gotta lower something. Talk to me.
Well, there's a dead end manhole between my brother's old house and the big tall brick house that runs right down in front of Kurt's house, and then goes down by the center, or down by the funeral, right? Right?
And then there's a cross there?
And then it keeps going down, and then there's a manhole down by the tracks that we just got redone when we did Third Street.
Mm-hmm.
Correct?
Yep.
And then it goes underneath the tracks. I don't remember having a problem underneath the tracks, so.
I don't have a problem. We have a problem on the other side.
I know, I didn't say we have a problem on the tracks, I'm saying as you come up Fifth Street from the tracks, Alpine turns into Fifth. Right, so come up, up Fifth Street.
Mm-hmm.
We've got that lead that goes up the alley.
Right.
That has something going on there with the manhole. There's something going on there.
Right.
And then the church, that church wants us, we'd like to put their lead out front, right, but the sewer's too high or low, I can't remember, too.
I don't see, there's something.
There's something, something on that section of Broad in front of to, towards downtown from Fifth Street. I thought, I thought when you and I were out there talking to Jerry, we were talking about when we did that part of Broad, we were gonna lower the sanitary, so it all came so they could get a lead, a sanitary lead out the front rather than out to the back.
Right. If we ever did that, we might, or at least look at it, look at it, because I don't know the elevations though.
My point, that's the downstream end, to me, I mean, the, 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 the storm on Broad goes down Fifth.
Half of the road, I think, goes one way, and then the other half goes the other.
Yeah, so you gotta, we gotta start at the low end, is what I'm getting at, because we would, we gotta do the underground, at the same time we do above, so we gotta start at the downstream end.
But we have the.
Of, of the utility systems, don't worry about the pavement.
Well, but are you talking about wastewater or stormwater?
Both. Because if you're gonna, if they're under the roadway or they're in need of whatever, you'd wanna do them when at the same time you did the roadway, right? We're talking about reconstruct the road, right?
No, I understand, I understand, no, I just couldn't figure out.
We're just talking resource, I'm saying, I don't.
I do remember that discussion.
No, but Sean, that's a great point, I mean, we've already got the outlets down here for the half of the water to come down Broad. If we redo Broad Street, we need to shoot all of the.
That's the storm sewer we put through the property.
Exactly, so we got, we got the storm there already. But we also gotta go through, and we gotta look at every sewer lead, because we don't wanna put brandy wash fall on sewer leads, so we'd have to scope that, TV that, correct?
I think we, I mean, they're a long way, it's a big.
And I'm just saying, there's a lot of work that's, they can need to be done before we actually put the.
But you know, kind of fall abroad, that's abroad that they're talking about? I mean, we don't like what brand it puts, if they put brand up in the basement.
Or they could just not, I don't know what they have in the basement of the house, if they have a bathroom down there or not, so, you need to shoot the elevation.
Yeah. I don't know the system, I know in one conversation I had with this young man when he was helping me try to they were asking to pay for something that wasn't our issue, and what we said is we would look at can we put there, can we get them a sewer lead tapped off of Broad instead of the alley? Right, and, but the, the reason they can't do it today is I think that's, it's too high, it's, it's, sewer on Broad isn't low enough. But there's certainly grade to bring it around the corner and come towards the tracks, because Broad falls down to the tracks.
That could be something.
Oh yeah, Broad's a lot higher than the sewer going onto the tracks.
I don't remember the depths of the sewer up there.
When you drive up the hill, when you come around Alpine, you go up to get to Broad.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So the sewer falls, sewer falls the same way, no, all, all.
When you say the tracks, you mean the tracks next to the.
Well, the tracks are right here, but they come around, yeah, yeah, Pat, right, but they come around, and that's, that's where all our storm water goes, it goes out here to the little ditch along the railroad. And the other one goes down Broad by the library and Brown.
All worse, putting everything on the rail.
It all comes shooting out to where we're gonna have to have our compensated cut for the fire.
I'm saving.
They'll, they'll, they'll get there, they'll get there.
I have a, one more question.
Next year.
Main and Forest. You got, I mean.
Millen. Yep, so, 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 uh, to, 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 to separate.
Okay.
So, did, design of Main and design of Fourth.
Four, actually.
From Millen.
Yep, for, for, for Millen.
Who would?
The Millen overlay.
But at Main and Fourth?
No, 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 no.
And Fourth.
Main.
That's what I did, Fourth. Because when you said. I, that's why I asked, I, I didn't know if you were thinking of doing a small section by the church there or something.
Yeah, no, that's fair. Um, uh, and, and, and th- those, those are all as, as listed in, in, in the TAMP.
If you wanted to put that, you could say design and, and design.
Okay.
Where are those junk?
Uh, glasses.
Nervous.
Yeah, so, and those will be in major.
Oh, they're not in the memo?
Yeah, and they, 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 they should be in the memo.
The last, last paint's under twenty-five, twenty-six.
Yep.
Yep. It's the second.
So show me. First twenty-five, oh, there's twenty-five, twenty-six. Alright, I, I, I got it, I got it.
It wasn't on screen. That was lost for a while, too.
Guys, got it, okay.
Um.
Okay.
So, yeah, so, so, I mean, the, the, the biggest project in twenty, twenty-five, twenty-six is, um, the construction of Dexter Crossing. And there, there's a.
So, so, Main Street between what, what, again?
Uh, Main Street between the bridge and.
Totally should put that on the DDA.
We, we could.
I would, I would, I would totally write up, write up something that we, something really nice that we asked them to do that, that's their downtown. They got fifty thousand, they'll have fifty thousand in two years, ask them, check programming for that.
For the design?
So from the bridge.
For the design, yeah, it's downtown infrastructure, yeah.
Because, because they're gonna have the whole strategic thing, there might be things they wanna do with streetscape wise or whatever else, have them do the resurfacing.
Right, that's a great way to pitch it, yeah, well, it's gonna say the stuff you wanna do, design it.
Where's the boundaries on this? Main Street.
I, I, I think it's, I think it's, uh, from the bridge to either Broad or Central.
And that's parking spots and everything.
Yep.
That is all.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, the day, the day, the danger, the danger of that is that they get, or we get crazy with ideas.
But back in park.
Well, I don't know, nothing with anything, could be, you know, whatever, but.
Oh, speaking of parking.
We just wanna take some relief for somebody.
So I drove by it. I don't know, four-thirty this morning, going to work. And the spots, but right in front of Painted Trout, like three or four, when we're parked up. But we have two-hour parking there?
Oh, there's all that cars that park out there.
Yeah, and.
The residents, they should be parked in the back.
Deputize you.
What's that?
Before you go to work.
Every day on Wednesday morning, I'll be out there.
Well, I, I, I mean, it, it's been a long time since, since we've actually done park, parking enforcement.
I, I understand, I'm, it just, it surprised me, that, that's a lot of cars parked there, four-thirty, but, okay.
Um, and also, I think in twenty-five, twenty-six, we're looking at, um, the alley, um, on the backside of Main Street. Um, behind Huntington and, uh, uh, Birado.
That's also DDA.
Mm-hmm.
Which one? They did it the first time, I, I'm telling you, you gotta put these projects. We, we got, we gotta say to the DDA, hey, we think it's time that the DDA invested in those projects.
They're gonna do that, we signed the first thousand. It's here.
But I'm saying that they, they, they paid for that the first time, that alley, they, the DDA did that in two thousand and.
Long time ago.
Long as.
I, not that I don't want the DDA to do it, do we need to do that? That doesn't seem like that areas.
It's, it's, it's pretty beat up back there, yeah. So also, so I mean, even just looking at like the dumpster corral pad, the paths here, and like, uh, the asphalt is like down here.
There's a lot of rock. Delivery.
Yeah.
I mean, okay, I mean, we, we, we should, we should hand a memo, you know, from City Council to DDA saying, hey, future capital improvement projects that we'd appreciate you guys programming.
Right.
You know, like it's fairly cheap, it's just Millen over, too, I mean, all the utilities are done, everything's up to date, and.
I, 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 I would probably have them redo the dumpster corral.
Oh, here we go.
I'm sorry. Well.
Now it became hard. No, I get it, I get it.
But, I, 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 I think if, if you reconfigure it a little bit, and like, ma- maybe even expand it a little bit.
Say that, we can negotiate that.
Yeah.
Right.
But, but maybe, you can, you can put a compactor back there.
Um.
When it was Encore, we were pushed to move it.
Mm-hmm.
But Encore's not there, so thankfully, nobody's brought that top, it's been a long time.
Yep. Yep.
It's a hard thing, it's a hard thing to do, what?
Sorry.
No, go ahead, Tim, go ahead, please.
My experience is, I have experience with contractors. They don't work, people don't care, they throw the product out. If it's broke, they're just gonna pack it up, you guys should take that.
I asked to say.
I, 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 I.
Retire.
Foot fake, Kim, Kim was up saying, hey, look, if you're being watched, then lawyers can't do that, because if something's happened, you wanna take it and throw.
Put it on.
Those, and then went back to.
Should have real cameras.
That don't work. Should have real cameras that don't work.
Right. I mean, you did. We bought a nice fake camera, edited, light out and everything, you know, you did look.
A nice sign.
Alright.
Legit.
Oh, the person calls, applies the editing. But then, and we just, that is talent.
Uh, but, uh, on the flip side, the, the nice thing about it is that, um, they can, we, we, we can program it, so that way, like, you have to put in a code.
Yep.
And you, and you can gi- give a code to each business. And so that, that, then they, you can assign the charges based on, you know, who's putting in their code, yeah.
So, it's on time, so, but we have, they won't break that, I mean, I don't have time to blow up this.
So, so let me keep rambling on one thing.
Sure.
So I asked you about what the fund balance was projected to be at the end of twenty-four, twenty-five.
Yep.
And you told me roughly five hundred and thirty thousand or something like that. Right?
Correct.
So then what's it projected to be at the end of twenty-five, twenty-six?
Um.
With another million, seven hundred thousand dollars worth of stuff.
Yeah, they, 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 that might have been twenty-five, twenty-six that I gave, yeah.
Well, no, there's a lot in both.
Oh, sorry, uh, so, and, and of twenty-five, twenty-six is, uh, ending fund balance will be two, two sixty-nine, six hundred.
Okay, so that's, that's a big drop.
Mm-hmm.
It's a big drop in two years from, what is it right now, two million?
Mm-hmm.
So we're gonna, we're gonna use up eighty percent or ninety, eighty-five percent?
It's giving more money.
Well, what, well, what I was gonna say is, we, we could, we have cap. And then in the road fund, we have available millage in the road fund.
I apologize, say that again.
I'm just observing on a big picture, that today we have two million dollars in the road fund, which is there to spend, I get that, to put back in the construction, I like the direction we're going. In two years, that's gonna be down to two hundred eighty-nine thousand, it's gonna go down eighty percent.
Mm-hmm.
Do we want to have, do we want to raise more? Because you're gonna have big projects off of this list that aren't here, like Broad. You wanna have, you wanna use the millage that's out there. You wanna raise taxes, what I'm saying. And we, we have available, what, a half a mil?
So, Murray knew it was coming.
Point three, probably, three, four.
It's a hundred grand.
I'm just saying, if we did it for two years, you'd have almost five hundred thousand at the end of that, instead of, instead, if you're trying to maintain your half a million that you answered with.
Well, but, uh, al- also, if, if, um, if we get the three hundred and eighty-five.
I know, that'll go one spot.
Right, and all these ones.
That's one, that's not the whole program, that would be.
Right. But, but, but we, we can, we can, depending on what project we pick, we, we can offset some of the use of fund balance with, with, uh, the, the grand dollars.
The grant dollars are only good for construction, alright?
Correct.
So, and we gotta get to that project before we can spend.
Yeah, which, which, I mean, um.
I'm just saying, you, the, 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 don't focus on that number, we're depleting the funds eighty percent in two years.
Yes.
Yep. That's a lot.
Well, is there, is there a minimum we should have?
Well, there's.
And Rose, it's not that we got all the one, we should have some in there.
Right.
Um, that's why I'm saying push everything you can to the DDA. It's, it's within the DDA district.
I agree, it's a supplement, and, so, from the budget meeting that I left when we were at Co-Plin, because of this topic?
Well, maybe we should borrow.
No, what, um, what I, I'm not, I'm not opposed to saying we shouldn't, I'm not saying that I don't think we should impose an additional millage, if there's, if we have a plan and a designation for where that goes, I, I don't like the idea of just saying, let's just assess what we can assess, and we'll have something that we're gonna use. I, I know we'll have something that we can use it for, but we should have a, we should have a plan that says we're gonna do back to.
We always have that plan. We didn't have that at one point. Well, we had for.
Yeah, we have, we have a general plan.
Right, but in that general plan, well, number one, you, you can't keep riding on dollars from ten years ago, things are more expensive.
Oh, yeah.
You know what I mean, you can't. And then how can't you justify spending more money on roads? I think that's justifiable, and that's something that the taxpayer sees every day.
Right.
You know, so for me, I would like more money for you guys, because I've looked at what we've done the last ten or fifteen years, and it's, it's really good.
Mm-hmm.
But, that's just me.
All I'm, all I'm saying, for example, is to, 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 to follow your lead, after you stormed out of the meeting, ten or twelve years ago, what we decided to do, when we wanted to spend a million dollars, was we bonded for the million, and instead of depleting the reserves by a million at that time, which we probably didn't have at that time, we programmed eighty or ninety thousand dollars over ten years, and we still had a higher reserve amount. Well, I don't know how high the reserve, the reserve balances.
Now, wait a minute, after the meeting, Jim and I put together the first road plan that we worked on. The next year, we talked about the road plan, we had it all laid out, and we said, if we had eight hundred thousand dollars, we could jumpstart this, that's what we did.
Didn't mean to leave out that detail, like. I'm, I'm giving you credit, but I'm trying, it was your, it was your fury that drove it, yeah, I, I, I'm there, I'm there. I, I'm trying, what I'm trying to say, though, is it's a big drop to go, I mean.
To three hundred thousand, yeah.
Raina, how do you, what do you think about dropping from two million? You know, she, she's. I'm just saying, it, it, that's a big drop, is all I'm.
Well, well, which, which, I mean, um, go- going into this year, um, you know, the, the, the plan was, was to use fund balance to put, put it back into the road system. Um, I, I, I also didn't expect to be this good at. At, yeah, at, at spending, um, so.
Can I ask you something? How did we get to the?
So, the, 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 the last couple of years, we, we've, we've done really well in, um, in building up the fund balance, um, between.
Have projects programmed?
So, so, we, we, we tended to, to take, um, like, one big project a year.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, and that one big project a year
wasn't eating up the whole.
Wasn't eating up the, the, the whole, whole amount.
Plus our, I believe, community stabilization.
Yeah.
Was that, part of it goes in the roads.
But is that, what, what, did that include, was that COVID thing, is that something we taxed?
You know, so, they did, when they got the personal farming facts, they guaranteed, yeah, a lot of militaries, they sponsored terms. Get that in October.
Right.
And then after they had all of the schools and colleges and everybody, at the end, the law tells them, they have to distribute everything that was left. So they look at what's left over, and they send out another distribution that, that's not there, there's no guarantees on.
Sure.
So we never much.
So the local stabilization affects our general and our road.
Right. So, I know we don't, but, do we anticipate that that's gonna continue? I know we don't, but do we anticipate that that's gonna continue?
Yes.
We can't really.
Well, hasn't been relatively steady.
Absolutely.
Okay.
But can like, can, can it, you know?
Disappeared, yeah.
Yes, so. We kind of taking the, the looks, but you know, you don't wanna like.
What size is that?
Oh, that's twenty, what, sixty or seventy?
That sounds about right.
Sixty or seven thousand.
But um, you know, you don't wanna program those funds in and all of a sudden say that.
Well, it's, it's, it's forty percent, it's forty percent or whatever general is.
Yeah, and and so it's.
For generals, ten mills and treats is four, so, so if we get an extra two hundred thousand dollars.
So, so for fiscal year, uh, twenty twenty two, twenty three activity was two hundred and thirty three thousand eight hundred. The, the local community stabilization, uh, last fiscal year, tw- twenty two, twenty three.
But only forty percent of that went into.
No, no, that, 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 that's all roads.
Oh, you're doing that, that's the total from streets.
Correct.
Yeah, but what, what, what were the different payments?
Yeah, so, so like, the, the, right, right, right now, our activity. Uh, is, is projected to be a hundred and fifty three thousand eight hundred. That doesn't include the second may payment.
Uh.
Okay. Oh, uh, so, so, so. One, 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 one fifty three does, does, no, one, one, one fifty three does include May.
Million.
Yeah, so.
Let me put it differently. Will we be able to do a road project? In. After this goes through with the funds that we're gonna have. Are we gonna be dead in the water for a couple of years?
No, I, I, no, I mean, we, 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 we still collect, you know, one point two million a year. So, so.
That's not the two hundred and eighty nine thousand?
Or are you asking with, with just the lo- local community stabilization?
No, no, no.
So, so Joe, I, I, two hundred and eighty nine is the reserve.
Yeah.
Right, so, so, so what the, what the four mills generates is the one point two million.
Right.
Or well. Right?
So, 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 so the, with, with, with the current plan, basically, we're going hard right now.
Yeah.
And then we would have to let off the gas.
We'd have to go based on what we collected.
Correct.
Only not so much.
Correct. Which I, I mean, I mean, you know, we're, we're. Resurfacing, you know, we're, we're putting a slurry in, in West Ridge, Industrial Park. I mean, we're getting, we're getting a lot done in the next.
So what, 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 what we're counting on is a hundred and fifty three thousand in local community stabilization money. Last year, we got two thirty three, so there's eighty thousand dollars that isn't accounted for and anything is looking for. That could be coming in the mail in the May payment.
Correct.
Right. Which would be, so, so the two eighty nine would all of a sudden be three sixty nine.
Mm hmm.
Yeah, but still, that's not.
What, it's, no, it's not a lot, but it's, it's more than, I mean, that represents quarter what we would have.
Yeah.
And then if you have two years to do the two mays before you get to the next one.
Right.
Now you're up to four fifty.
Right, and, and, and if we choose to offset some of the, uh. Well, DDA, but then. Sorry. No, 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 no. Uh, i- if we choose, if we choose to o- offset uh some of the use of, of fund balance with um our AA Cub money or, or. Watts essentially tip money, then that, that also looks better for the uh. Uh, the ending fund balance. Okay. Good, good, good or bad? Okay.
So when they come back local payments for stabilization.
Mm hmm.
They did not give us a breakdown in villages.
Okay.
Right away.
Okay. Okay.
All in general.
Oh. Okay, okay.
See, it looks better already.
Look, look, looks, looks less good for uh, for, for general fund.
Glad I mentioned it.
Yeah, I, 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 I saw there wasn't anything in activity, activity for this year and I was like.
I'm not, I'm not against putting it in the roads. I'm not against putting it in the roads. I just think that it's important to make, to understand. Fund balance is key in a lot of things. We need to bond, it's important. If we need to. Emergency stuff, it's important. If stuff that we haven't thought of, it's important. It's just important.
Yeah.
And we've worked hard to have fund balance.
The, the, so, um, you know, we, we just had, had a bond. That were, that, that's, you know, coming off this year.
Yep.
Um. You know, I think we were paying ninety to a hundred thousand a year to pay off that bond, which was for a million dollars.
I know, that's all counted, that's all counted for your numbers.
Yeah, but, 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 but also, you know, a million dollars doesn't go as far as, as it used to. So if, if we were to bond, it wouldn't be, you know, ninety to a hundred thousand dollars a year would be. Significantly more than that to, to, to get us through some projects that would be impactful.
Well, what I'm saying is like the million dollars that you have to do like the Dexter Crossing Roads.
Mm hmm.
You can still do it all in one time and just.
Yeah.
Bonfle.
Yeah.
How much? How much is ninety dollars? Can't be that much.
So, sorry, say, say that again?
How, how? How many lane miles is a million dollars?
So, so that, 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 yeah, so, 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 so I think that gets us the rest of Wellington, um, a portion of. Um, Lexington. Yeah, 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 yeah. Um, it's a, all, all, all of the, the, the circles, so.
Five thousand square yards of payment.
Twenty five thousand square yards? From New York wide as a length or road?
Well.
Hey, Josh, can, 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 can you bring up the, the, the DMP?
In Plymouth, we just did, we got a bid for three quarters of a million dollars and I think it was twenty five thousand. Square yards of.
Right, but I'm not, I'll look up. Suggesting is if the road.
I got the wrong number.
Thirty two or thirty four feet wide.
I'll, I'll tell you.
That's like eight thousand feet of road.
Yeah, I'll, I'll tell you, it's not that much. Yeah. I'm off on a number, let me, I'll, I'll tell you, how much two quarters buys.
Oh, no. It's eight hundred feet.
Right, there you go. Now you're, it's more than that, though. Buys more than eight hundred feet.
Okay, so, but. Thousand feet, twelve hundred feet.
No, it's, it's more, it's, it's more, it's a half mile or more.
Wow, and you think that's only a million dollars?
That's, that's why, that's what Ouija me show.
Really?
What, they just. Oh, gotcha. So, you know, eighty, eighty five thousand plus sixty one plus eighty eight plus one thirty plus two fifty. You know, going down to the end of Carrington.
You're looking at the, the miles or, or reserve?
Uh, so, so, so the, the, the budget impacts total is on right.
The first two. Boxes, right? Well, everything except for the last three. Over three hundred and ninety. So, yeah, just shy and be nine hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah. Which I, I mean, that, that doesn't include um, design or.
But you had design in your set.
Yeah, yeah. I, I, and I, I, I asked Ouija to, to include CE in, in that. Um, wh- whether or not it does is a question to be asked.
There's gotta be some crosswalks in there too, isn't there?
Well, so, 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 th- these are. Only for what, what is stated. So it, 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 it doesn't include touching any curb or, 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 it, it, it may, may, may include.
John, what's the rule on that?
A limited amount of cur- cur- curb and sidewalk.
If, if you, you're talking about an AD crossing, you're milling up against one and it's not AD compliant, you have to do it.
Okay.
So, so we did for seven hundred and twenty seven thousand, I'm sorry, there's twenty five thousand square yards.
Yeah.
So I mean, I could actually, like, in Plymouth, all the roads are like thirty one feet wide.
Uh huh.
So it's, you know. So if.
They say three hundred thousand on mile, I think is what they got there. Right, that's what this.
Yeah, I'm gonna tell you.
Yeah.
So twenty five thousand. Times nine would be. Two hundred and twenty five thousand square feet. Divide by thirty one for wide. We're doing mile ahead. Yeah, we're doing seventy three hundred.
That's a better, let's get that price.
Did, 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 does that include CE?
That's just construction portion.
Okay.
That doesn't include CE. But this has pavement markings in it and it has. It's just resurfacing though, and there's, and there's not a lot of curb and gutter repair or anything that.
Mm hmm.
The pit speeds there are in good condition.
You just go along, tear it up, asphalt, lay new stuff down.
Yeah. Which, which, which is what, what this assumes, basically.
This, this would apply to. Street down there's on Fourth Street.
Or, I mean, right, that much, that much roads for a million dollars seems like. That seems pretty good to me.
What's that?
What was on the map? As much as was done on the.
The greens?
Yeah, the greens, yeah.
Put that, that map up again?
Yeah.
Uh, this year.
Go ahead.
Sorry, um, no, the, it, it's not on the budget, but it reminds me. Um, two questions. One, there's some uh concrete work being done on Wellington and Carrington. Is that us or the? H O?
Yes.
That's it. Um, so I have a question. Who puts the, what side of the street people can park on and what side?
You.
I do. Because, so this portion. On this side of the street, people can, cannot park. On this side of the street, people can park.
On which street?
Um, this is so on Wellington. On Wellington.
Yeah.
But from this stop sign here to this. That goes to cul-de-sac a little bit, people can park and they do park and it causes a lot of issues because.
Oh.
They kind of like, people that are trying to get out have to go around it and all of a sudden there is a car coming from the other side. Um, so is there a way to put something here in this portion that people can't park in that portion?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oops. I know the parking is not because of media press.
We might have to have a, might have, might need a trap.
So whatever side of mailboxes are on, you can all park.
Well, that, that's, that's a west, that's a West Ridge rules.
Well, but. But to her point, though, and the entrance to, on East Ridge, there's no parking on either side of the street. There'll be parking on the other side, either post. On the, on the, on the west side of the street of East. Is the east side of East Ridge is where the mailbox is at. That's the west side has no parking center.
So we don't have any mailboxes within the subdivision. Our mailbox is out here and out here.
Oh, yeah.
This is just on.
Oh, so just one side of the street park.
Yeah, one side of parking.
And, and I, I wasn't hearing it explained, but I imagine it's because of the weather.
Yeah.
Yeah, which is totally fine. I think the rest of it is fine, people parking, but it's just this middle TBTs.
You, you just want no, no, no parking as you approach the intersection.
Yes.
Because.
Between this little cul-de-sac here and the stop sign, if there is no parking on. It's already not on one side, but it can be no parking on the other side.
Yeah.
I mean, do you guys know if we've got any cores out there on these streets we're redoing?
Yes.
Yeah, we do.
Yeah, we were, so, so we, we, we based a lot of the decisions of what roads to do based on concourse that we had.
Oh. And are we doing? Are these like, well, no, and overlays or is that?
None. Got KQ, Q, Q, uh, scroll down, one, one more page. Or, or sorry, yeah, just scroll up. And uh, uh, the, yeah, that right there and then zoom in. So the, 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 the. The, the treatment is on, is on the left side.
That's perfect. Don't even need my glasses.
So like, like milling overlay, inch and a half, milling overlay, two inches or. So, 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 so some of them are partial depth, some are, some are. Did down to the base.
Well. What I remember is we did something that I. What do we call quarter cut?
Quarter crown?
Quarter crown.
Yeah.
On the sides, but. Well, and we didn't do really anything in the mid. Oh, we didn't.
A little bit, not as much.
We did a lot to help. No, it was still lower on the sides, because it. Yeah, so what they do is they did the middle, but what you do is they, they basically leave what's there. Except for the middle, like we did, and then they mill the sides and then they put it in.
Right.
See the crowns looking.
Is that what we're doing in Dexter Crossing or no?
No, Dexter Crossing is gonna be slower next.
No, no, no.
Mill and overlay.
Whoa, 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 West Ridge is slurry.
Yeah.
Yeah, West.
The, 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 the Dexter Crossing is, is mostly that milling overlay.
Yeah, I can tell you about my Dexter Crossing and West Ridge. But anyway, so, okay, yeah, um.
No, milling overlay, inch and a half, and then uh.
There's one a little bit further down that's four inches for.
Yeah.
I assume for.
That's four.
Four, so.
Wilson.
Yeah, so, so, so Josh, if you scroll, scroll down a little bit.
The second I get the light.
Yeah, yeah. Yep.
Carrington, yeah. Okay, Carrington's good.
Yeah, so, so, so I mean, mo- mo- most of the streets are, are inch and a half, so, you know, they basically did take off the wear, the, the wearing quarters.
Just the one and a half all the way across and then replace. Okay.
Which, which I, I, I mean, as, as part of the replacement, I mean, I expected that, that, that they will restore some of the um. Some of, some of the ground, but.
I just worry.
So we're two years, two years in a row in Dexter Crossing then? She flat?
No, no, so, so.
Oh, here on Farms, the first is next year and then.
Yep, correct.
And then.
Yep, so, so, and, and uh. Josh, if you can. Go up to twenty twenty four. There you go. So, so, yeah, so we, we have, we have Forest, uh, and then, you know, Wilson, Ulrich.
Yeah, that's all here in Farms.
That's all here on Farms in twenty twenty four and then twenty twenty five is Dexter Crossing.
So with like Forest, we're just gonna keep Forest the way it is. We're not gonna.
That's, that's the plan.
Didn't we completely do great for us?
No.
Storm.
What's that?
It's storm.
I'll tell you, some of the roads that we did early on, Joe, when we went in and milled up at all and used that as a base.
Yeah.
Crushing shape, that worked real well.
Yes, we got. And when we did like Dover and.
Mm hmm.
I mean, I swear to God, they were laying down six inches of asphalt. It was just unbelievable.
Right.
That's what I think, but.
Yeah.
First I seen it, that was pretty impressive.
Yeah, that is, and using that base.
Ha, so, so, Ha- Ha- Hudson is, is a crushing chain, yep.
So if you think about it, though, we. Hudson Grand. The entrance wasn't the Hudson Grand.
It's easy, we're just putting on that curb and there.
Yeah, because we never did Grand, but Grand held up the best or, and it was like, how the hell did? And then, but then. After I was off council.
Yeah.
The, because Grand was a big project.
Once the number hits two, it stays at two a long time.
Assentically.
You get, you get a lot of life at those low numbers. You can have as much.
It actually slows traffic down quite a bit.
Yeah.
Especially going downhill.
There's a lot of lifespan, though. I like the crushing. The crushing shape, that's all, depends on alert, so level service protection, you know, perspective, right?
I remember. Here on Street was bad when I first started the DPW.
Okay.
Mm hmm. Bad.
Alright, so. Is that the special you wanna bring up at council or something? To talk with the millage?
I can bring it up. Well, I, I, well, I just think.
Are we setting the millage at the next meeting?
I don't know, I just think.
We're not breaking, we're setting it in June.
It, it, it was, so, so, yeah, we, we, we set it for the first meeting in June.
I don't, I just try to tell a story a little bit different than put it in the numbers, that's all. I'm sorry, I just tell the story a little bit different. As long as, and, 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 you know, we're spending it here, 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 here. I think it's always good to know what you have in the bank and, you know, what comes in and. Like, how can you build it up or how long will it take you to build it back up if you're trying to build it back up and, you know, I, I personally think that somewhere. We should get a cost estimate for what we need to do on Broad, so we have some idea of whether three eighty five is a good amount of it or a half of it or a third of it.
Well, well, I mean, I mean, we, we, we know, we know roughly what we spent on, on Third and Broad. Well, well, I mean, I mean, we, we, we know, we know roughly what we spent on, on third and broad.
I, I just saying, there's, there might be, there's, there, there might be utility improvements, I, I'm saying there's.
The thing too, bro, think about Sean, you're, you're. Four lanes. If you're not waiting for like parking and all that stuff, you could put there. And I think you should.
I can tell you, I, I can tell you, there's gonna be at least one person that says it shouldn't be, it's wider than it needs to be.
Yeah.
Oh.
Um, I'm, I'm representing him.
Got it. No, I mean. Just going back to the very beginning, when you said, we should do broad section by second by section, then we talked about whether, which end we start on, that kind of stuff. But I mean, that's a good example, it's like, how long is that gonna take, right? That may take four years of efforts and.
Well, it could be, it could, I mean, it could be two more programs before we get from the light down to here.
That's what I'm saying.
That could be two cycles of pay on the three eighty five.
Well, I, 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 I mean, we, we, based on how much it costs for third and broad, I mean, it, it could be even three cycle. I mean, if we tackle, you know, block by block.
Right. Plus, if we decide to do decorative stuff like on central and.
I mean, I mean.
Roads. Or, well, you have other roads that need detection too.
No, I understand, and that's why, I mean, the incremental increase in the village. I mean, when you're talking about, there's a, there's major projects in the near future, at least you could say these are the things.
We can get to them a little sooner. And maybe we can be the highest miller rate in Washington County.
We're number one.
I don't think so.
You're gonna take those phone calls when people get their nets off?
You know, I'll take any, any phone call.
To be clear, that's not, that's not the recommendation coming from management.
No, no, I was just, I, I, I was just asking if, if management's recommendation was to deplete reserves by eighty percent. And if everybody was comfortable with that, that's what I was.
They look for a solution.
Well, so, so.
I was trying, I was trying to offset the depletions.
So, so, what, what, what you, what you, what you want?
That's excellent.
And, and, and what, what you won't see in here is, I think, three years ago, three or four years ago, we were at about four hundred thousand in reserves in roads.
Yeah.
So, it's, it, it's a wave. Are we a big project?
All right, should we go on to water?
We can.
Much simpler fun.
All right, so that memo is, uh. Follows the road fund, of course, I didn't, uh, didn't put page numbers at the bottom. Um. So, we. Did not end up getting very many tap fees in the current fiscal year. Um, and the. Usage generally is lower than anticipated. Um, which, you know, has, has kind of been a trend. Um, but we, 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 we also, oh, overall.
Sewer, water, both.
Both.
Okay, thank you.
Um, but, uh, you know, we, we, we still have, um, May and June left. Uh, ti- typically the, the bill that goes out in July gets put back, um, to June. And, um, that's usually our largest, um. Uh. Month worth of, of invoices.
Sure.
Um. So. That being said, we, we do have quite a few projects on the horizon that, um, I think we are. Anticipating tap fees to be generated from. Um, and those are on the, on the first page of, um, sewer and water. Um, senior center, Palom, Superior Storage, couple of projects at seven zero zero one, Dexter and Arbor. Um, there's still some buildings left in, uh, Grandview, um, that tap, that they have to pay tap fees on. Well, if, if Millennium Place ever gets developed. Um, Mike Penn's, uh, project in Mill Creek Flats and, um, proposed Kentwood on Baker Road. And among all of those, you know, there's, there's a good amount in, in tap fee revenue there. Um, how exactly those will fall, um, I think is, is to, you know, to, to be determined, whether it's this coming fiscal year or next fiscal year, if, if at all. Um. I've, I've budgeted. Very conservatively in tap fees at fifty thousand, uh, for next fiscal year. Uh, mostly because I budgeted a hundred thousand tap fees this year and we're getting about sixty five hundred, so.
Sixty five hundred?
Yeah. So, I ki- kinda got bit in the butt on, on that one.
So, so where? What? You're saying total tap fees?
Total tap, uh, well, no, it's sixty five hundred and. Sewer, I believe.
I'm saying forty five in water.
Not being paid upfront in their entirety. They're being billed.
I'm just saying, I'm, I'm looking at the revenue on the side of the water fund.
In water?
That's where we're starting, right?
Yeah, we, we, we can, we, we can start in water.
You said forty five hundred, or you said fifty, I thought, I heard you say you're, you're doing. You did a hundred.
There, there's the, 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 thirty seven hundred and.
Yeah, but you, what you said is you budgeted a hundred thousand, I see forty five.
So, so, for, 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 sorry, I, I, I was, I was starting in sewer. So, so, for, for, for.
I follow the agenda.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
No, I got it, you're going alphabetically or numerically from five ninety, okay, go back. I'm with it, I'm, I'm, I'm in sewer, I'm in sewer.
All right, all right, all right, so, so sewer, we're, we're, we're gonna, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna go to sewer.
My bad.
One of them was the people that had a bomb term, you know?
Yeah.
They did a lot of, they, they, other than that, and then others wanted to tap.
Yeah.
For five thousand.
So who still has, who still has payment plans for, for tap fees?
Well, one.
Chay, Chayla's dead. I, I, I.
Did, did the schools have something for? Anchor? Or beacon, whichever one was cornerstone that became the other?
Uh, i- i- if they did, it's all, I think it's all paid off. I, I, I don't think we have anything remaining to.
Did somebody just confirm that that was collected, cause I, we may even deferred it a couple of years? I know who would know is Sharon. She's good, she's good numbers.
Mm-hmm.
Absolutely, I'll tell you.
No doubt.
Yes, sir.
When was the last time you did a study on the tactics?
Uh, it's, so. It, it, it's been a, it's been a while since we've done specifically a tap fee study, we, we did rate studies. For water and sewer.
Yeah.
Um, which came up with a recommendation of seven, seven percent in sewer and five percent in water.
Right.
The, the, the problem with tap fees is that. If you, if you are paying a tap fee, you are buying into the current system.
Right.
Our tap fees were set. Fifteen years ago or so.
Yeah.
When technically the system was more valuable. Because i- i- if you're counting into depreciation, the depreciation of our assets.
Yeah.
Has caused all of our pipes to be worth less.
Yeah.
So, so. So, but, but if, if we were to run another tap fee study. Just, just based on my conversation with, with our bond counsel.
Yeah.
It, they think that, that it would actually be less. Because, because the, the, because they're buying into a, into a older system. Andy.
Mm-hmm.
The counter records. If, if that is true, then our appreciation numbers should be higher than our. Than our capital numbers, and they're not. We're not as big now.
Yeah.
Especially, well, especially in sewer.
But, 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 so, 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 wh- wh- with, so, with tap fees, people aren't. Buying into future improvements. They're buying into what, what has already happened.
Correct, and that's why we have so much debt in sewer.
Too much debt?
Well, because we've got a lot of capital improvements in sewer. You know, all the pipe mining and all the equipment planned, I, I.
So. Is. What, what if it's possible to do a back end, and then below? This is what we think you, here's how much.
We, 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 we wouldn't be able to, we'd have to have our, have our. Um. Municipal advisors. Our, our, our finance advisors.
I would like, I would like, I would like, guy, you were, you're reasoning with that, I would do a conversation.
Mm-hmm.
Not for me, but I don't part, but I.
Uh, we, 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 we got into it a little bit when we were doing the, the raid studies.
You know, they don't saw it, but they had to tear it fast. Water. Big users.
Mm-hmm.
Paying water, stuff like that. He's gotta build the money down. Builds down fourteen dollars, all right, really. It's gone, it's a wrong whole lot. They did a study. They basically, because I don't lose a lot. They used to do it with black red. They did this study, so now what it is, the, the higher users. Like the dad goes, and most people are now paying more. Than what they would have paid before, because they're putting more strain in the system versus regular.
Well, and, and, I, I mean, to, to some degree, that, that's already kind of baked into the way that we do things, but with, 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 with charging by, by use. So, so, you know, if your residential user, you know, uses an average of four thousand gallons a month. You know, they're only paying for tho- those four thousand gallons in the use charge versus like DAPCO. If they're using, you know, a hundred thousand gallons a month, they're paying the use charge on that hundred thousand gallons.
In blocks sometimes.
Yeah, well, let's come back.
Been a long time.
Wasn't there something in the discussion about that?
I was gonna say, it would be interesting to understand where Andy, where Andy has seen. It go down and understand their structure. In a, in a sample, different community before you decide to go through that.
I think you're going to charge some of the, or. I'm just talking about that. So, I agree, sorry, I didn't want to mess with that chart, that was.
No, well, she's, oh, okay, I interpreted what you said, I, we charge.
Yeah, I think, I think what we talked about.
Mm-hmm.
Doesn't say use charge either.
Well, so, 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 I, I mean, so, so, you, you know, everybody has, has a ready to serve fee.
Everybody's got same offer.
Every, everybody is charged the same offer for, for ready, ready to serve, uh, uh, based on, based on their meter. And then, on top of that, everybody. You know, gets charged per thousand gallons. So, wh- 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 when, when, when the guys go, go out and read. And they come back with, with the read that, you know, it says this home used two, two thousand gallons, this home used four thousand gallons. All that gets uploaded into BSNA and everybody is charged based on, based on. How much usage they had, in addition to they're, they're ready to serve.
Yeah, everybody plays the same ready for serve, ready to serve charging.
No, I agree, I understand what you're saying, but what I'm saying, though, is that. When you got a dad who's using a hundred thousand gallons. And. John's.
Yeah, yeah, I, 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 I get what you're saying, and you should ch- ch- charge, charge, uh, the heaviest users a higher.
Ready to serve. Or whatever.
Yeah.
Or by the size of the meter.
Right.
They charge by the size of the meter.
We know, we need to do that too, and I just. They're the ones that are using the bulk of the water and.
We used to be set up by meter size. For tap fees. Yeah, for, for tap fees.
Tap.
Yeah, not.
That you.
So. Can we go back to tap fees real quick?
Yeah, I think we're still on it, yeah, yeah.
Um, well, I don't, I don't agree with his analogy. There's more to a water system than just the pipes. Okay, we've got pumps, we've got electricity, we got chem, none of that shit's getting any cheaper.
Mm-hmm.
We've got sand filters, right? We've got a pond we gotta clean out.
Mm-hmm.
And everything other than the pipes cost us more money every single year for the rest of our lives, there's nothing getting cheaper.
But the, the, their argument is that. It doesn't matter what we still have to do, or, 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 or the future projects that we have to take on, they have to look at what we have already done to date. And. Go back and, and basically do an evaluation of, of the current value of. Of, of the, of the assets that we currently have, not, not. The cost of what is to come. And because, you know, we, we installed, you know. Some pipes in, you know, nineteen eighty four. You know, nineteen eighty four, those might have been million dollar pipes, well, after depreciation, now they're three hundred thousand dollar pipes.
So. When we do things, so.
I don't.
Why would that, when you add, for instance, still the last five years of water. You got two hundred thousand dollars just in there.
Mm-hmm.
And you got two buildings, one sixty five thousand, and just one hundred fifteen thousand. These are all all of it, so. They. Well, they consider this product, I understand the plants are underground, we're doing.
Well, the, the new water main on second that you guys did, that we did a couple of years ago. That should, that should be a new asset that starts over on their books.
Right.
That should counteract some of the depreciation on the rest of the system.
And there's things that, you know, another thing too is every five years as well. So, they, they, they're well taken care of.
Mm-hmm.
No pun, no pun intended. No pun intended.
Yeah, right, but. I just think that, I go off the wire.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe that's how I see us. Okay, but. I see us doing a lot of stuff, especially piano stuff, that other people don't do.
Mm-hmm.
I would think that adds some sort of value.
It definitely adds a value.
If you understand, I mean, even if it's just a mix of the blocks, all of them wells, not that, you see your. They, we're not gonna worry about what's roasting away, like we did, it's not even a replacement. I just think that that has a value, and I don't want to admit it's compared to the huge picture, but you have a whole system that within, when you start building it late. Early. I mean, within thirty years, you have. Ninety five percent of the system freed up, that's. It's crazy, I mean, it's, it's awesome.
Mm-hmm.
But, it's just, I, I just. I get what you're saying, I just think there's, I, I think. That's. You know, I.
I never, I never looked at it, I never knew that that's what. I knew that that had something to do with it, I didn't know that's, that's all there was to it, because there's a lot more that was in it.
There, and, and, I mean, there's, there's, I mean. There's a reason they charged us a lot, a lot of money to do those studies, right? Cause there, there, there's a lot that, that goes into it.
Mm.
Lot that they have to look at. But, but, but we can.
But, but that, you know. I mean, you know, I'm not a big committee guy, but. You know, if, if that's like something that, like, the utility committee wants to investigate. Kind of as a. You know. Look into things and learn and talk to Andy and listen and have more ears than what we're hearing. You know, that's all. Good, I think, and it's good learning, yes.
Oh, yeah, the, the, to, to, to Marie's point, and I'm, I'm recalling that conversation now too, is that, that they're. They're, I think, shying away from the REU systems now. Right? That, um. It's, it's, it, like. There's some, something with, with how our, the REU system is, is, was developed that. Is, is out of date and is tough to justify now.
What are they going to then?
Yeah.
What are they going to now, then? Size of the water meters?
Yeah, I.
Good for you. Asset source system in the beginning of this year, twenty two, or maybe eleven, twelve, one point eight million. And that's this year was twenty one.
What?
That is fixed assets and sources.
Yeah.
At the end of two thousand and twelve. Was one point eight million.
That's because of all the investment in the wastewater plant.
That digest.
Equalization based and all that stuff.
Yeah.
Also.
Ed works building, all the lining, all the manholes, all the.
Nobody could spend money like this. We're pros. That's why I believe, now, since we're past in the boat. Oh, it was needed. It was needed. Well. For how many REUs we probably have. Well, here's, here's the telling fact to, to me in our sewer system. We have eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Or, maybe, eight hundred and sixty three thousand projected to the next budget. Out of a million eight. In total expenditures. That's bond payments.
Mm-hmm.
So, we're very bad.
Eight sixty three out of one point eight eight, one. Eight eight six is what I mean, that right. So, almost forty five percent, I would say, or forty eight percent. Is in long-term debt, which doesn't come off until twenty thirty, twenty thirty one, twenty thirty three.
Yep.
So, we, we have, what's, we have seven years where we're gonna, where we have, where we're dealing with fifty two percent. Of the revenue that we have.
Mm-hmm.
Great. After that, we're gonna have, it's gonna be a huge windfall on the sewer fund.
Mm-hmm.
Well, yeah.
And, 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 and.
We know that's, right then.
Probably said pretty well, right?
We already made it for that.
Uh, but.
Saying, I'm just saying, we, we get, we get a lot healthy in, in seven or eight years, when those come off.
We, yeah, maybe get rid of those forty year bonds that were paid for shit that came up the books ten years ago.
I know, I'm just saying it's there. I mean, that's.
That bond is longer than my career, it's here when I got here, it's gonna be here when I leave.
I can't believe you're not gonna stick it out. You're this close, you're this close.
No, I, one of the things I can stress too is that. Doesn't it talk about sewer or something? They love that. When things break, it's, it's not a thousand bucks here too, I mean, it's a hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
Um. But, that can move forward, I know. Believe me, I know most days if you're total all the time, but. Like I said before, that building's going. And we've done a lot of work around. We're gonna have to keep going, it's a lot of that. Justin's got some stuff in the future that might be. But I don't wanna see it turn into a fire.
Oh, I know.
It's so old, it's.
I hear you.
Which, and so, okay, good going into, going into sewer fund expenses for um, the next couple of years. Um, you know, we we have, you know, quite a few kind of smaller projects between. Doing in-house LED light conversion at the wastewater treatment plant. Um, ca- ca- chemical feed lines and supplies. Air transfer pumps, you know, all all of that, ge- getting down to kind of more expensive items with the RazWaz bladders. Um, the, you know, cleaning, doing a clean of the here on lift station. Um, but there's. You know, go going into twenty twenty-five, twenty-six, I I have a hundred thousand dollars in there to do um, kind of a bigger. Building improvement project at at the wastewater treatment plant. Um, to try and address some things like, um, you know, we we know that we need handrails on the clarifiers. Um. Doing some work in in the lab to replace rusting cabinets, countertops, et cetera. Chemical piping upgrades and and outfall improvements. Um, we know that we 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 just replaced one truck and utilities split between water and sewer. Or we we we're planning to get that truck here in the next couple of weeks. Um, but then we know that we that the the van that you see driving around also needs to be replaced. And so we're planning for that in in twenty-five, twenty-six as well. Um. To to the point that, you know, there's, you know, a lot of expensive stuff at at the wastewater treatment plant. Um, we have a list of of some of the the things that we know um, are likely to to need to be addressed here in the next, you know, five to ten years. Um. Barifier drives, um, the HVAC in the operations room. Um, blowers, um, drain drain pipes and the flooring. Mixer, um, so on and so forth. And, you know, all of that stuff is not, is not cheap. But I've had many conversations with with the guys that. Essentially, we're we're trying to get done what we can with what we've got until twenty thirty, twenty thirty-one, twenty thirty-three. Um, when, you know, we we may be able to plan for another bond project or. Um, you know, use, use the the funds that we would otherwise be putting towards bond payments, so save it up and and do a bigger project.
So when we. We we're increasing seven percent?
Seven percent is 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 what is recommended.
So assuming that happens. Does any of that become additional funds that we can use, or is that just? The variable costs are going up and we're using it?
So 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 it's it's a combination. So we 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 know that um. A variety of our costs will will continue to increase every year. Well, whether it's, you know, salaries, um, chemicals, the the, you know, that that uh, sludge hauling. Um, all of those are, you know, constantly going up. Um, the seven percent is designed to accommodate that and. Get us healthier, because we, otherwise, we're gonna keep drawing from fund ba- fund balance. And that's what we're trying to afford.
What is our reserve valves and water? I'm just looking it up from Monday. I'm trying to remember what it was.
The number?
Yeah, I was looking at your fund, your. Look right here.
So, I mean, pro- pro- projected. And I I have four point one, but that sounds low, that sounds high.
That's not the right number.
Yeah.
Those numbers don't make any sense.
Numbers in the spreadsheet are generated by BSNA. Uh, included in mixed assets.
Okay, that's that's what I thought.
So, um, you guys.
Well, both of them, I was interested in both numbers. I just have to find your agenda item.
Well, you may not have.
Oh, is it not in there?
It's in the model. In the, in the, it's not in the model of the, you know. Well, the model that they created, so the end of twenty-three, twenty-four, based on the budgets. For the square. It's supposed to be at over seven percent. With a cash balance of eight hundred and twenty-six thousand. Um, and we wanna be between fifty and seventy-five, slated to be seventy-two. Twenty-three years.
So trans- tra- translate that into a dollar for me. Or or does not, you know, you can't do it there.
Uh, nine eighty-six. Now, this is, I had updated small water yet, so this is flat, here's updates.
Nine eighty-six is what, what does that represent?
Cash balance is twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Nine hundred and eighty-six thousand.
Twenty-six, twenty-seven, what, you know, what is it today though?
It was.
Or or.
Forecast would be eight, twenty-six.
At 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 what point? At the end of this, okay, so that's forecast for end of fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. Yeah, okay, that's forecast, okay. And then you said it's supposed to grow to nine eighty-six? In twenty-six or twenty-six, twenty-seven?
But that also only has roughly a hundred and seventy-five dollars on the year in capital vehicles. So if anything. Bigger than that happens, or at least done, I'm a record.
Okay, well, and can you do the same for water? Please? We're gonna need to build some more flat buildings. Oh, I don't mind a lot of meetings.
The water. At the balance. Oh, forecast for the end of twenty-three, twenty-four of three hundred and sixteen. Part of me, twenty-five. Which is twenty-two percent.
Two twenty-five at the end of this year? Wow.
Um. And then forecast by end of twenty-five, twenty-six to be above the fifty percent level by seventeen. By twenty-six, twenty-seven. At seven fourteen or seventy-eight percent. But part of that was water.
So, so ju- just. So. Is it, is it fair to say that in the street fund, we're gonna deplete our revenues over the next two years by eighty percent? But in the water fund and sewer fund over the next two years, we're planning to grow them by some percentage? That's the kind of stuff I'd like to see in the general memo as a plan. To reflect what we're, what direction things are, the reserves are heading. Based upon the planned projects. You know, I mean, plain English words. See the projecting to deplete or increase. And because of, you know. Does that make sense? And and so the, so the eight twenty-six. Does not include the two hundred and twelve thousand that we have set aside to stabilize.
Right.
The sewer that's somewhere in the Huntington Bank. One of our eight ones. Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a fund. One of our eight, eight accounts at two hundred and fifty thousand. Oh, that's good. I noticed, I noticed more mattresses being delivered. Thank you, Murray.
I mean, how actually starting to. Take this rather. Old and. Probably creepy old model and.
And you, and you don't have those, you don't have those backwards, right? Well, the 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 finance director reports that you had for the sewer fund had a balance of a hundred and twenty-six thousand. And you told me at the end of the year, it's gonna be eight twenty-six. And the water, well, and the wa- the water has eight hundred thousand. They appear backwards. Okay, they they appear backwards though. Have, I have no idea what you're looking at. I'm telling you, in your report, you told me that water has eight hundred and two thousand, but today, tonight, you told me it's eight twenty-six for sewer.
Well, that was, that that's model.
All right, I'm looking at cash, huh?
Yeah.
I don't know how the model works.
Except, I mean, generally, water is healthier than sewer.
Well, that's why I was jonesing there. That's why I could. All right. Let's move on to rubbish then. Let's move on to rubbish.
Oh, no, no, seriously, no. Um, right now, as of, as right now, if we're talking, um, there is four hundred and eighty-five thousand. In cash in sewer. And three hundred and thirty-nine thousand of receding. The water has.
No, that was water, right?
And 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 you, I mean, utility bills just hit.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm looking at a balance as of. Water has about eight hundred and some? Okay.
Okay, yeah, well, 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 water's in better shape than sewer. Oh, I al- always has been since I've been here. But I I mean, this is, I mean, sewer also. Is, you know. Almost double in expenditures what what water is, so.
Two million versus one.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, I I mean, e- even even now, I mean, nobody will give us, you know, more than a year.
Tim, is there other options instead of using bleach? There could be a cost savings deal?
For water. For sewers, water, um.
I mean, we 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 talked really quick about, you know, UV systems, but that's, that's a huge upfront investment.
Cause you don't need to buy sulfide with the.
Yeah, cause, cause I mean, you you have to put the chemicals in in into the system, then you have to use different chemicals to take them out.
Right, but with the.
With the UV systems, yeah.
So they. In water. Who got the wax of the point gas?
I can tell you it's not nice stuff.
I like it, but it's it's dangerous as well. There's going on a lot. It will be down instead of just a little bit. Yeah, I mean, there's. There's a, there's not, not this one.
All right, let's talk to you.
Um, trick tricks trees are attracted to to remain the same. Um. Rubbish. Um, we're in negotiation with with waste management right now over. What the, what the fee looks like. The last time we met with them, um, they proposed five percent over five years. Um, we talked them into, you know, one point, uh, four percent over five years.
Every year four percent.
Every year four percent. Um, but. To 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 be determined, um, that's also has come before council for discussion. Um, we're looking at increasing uh, the residential rate. Uh, from twenty-eight fifty to twenty-nine fifty. Um, per month. So every, every bimonthly bill, an increase of two, two dollars. Um, and that, you know, that one, we have a a lot of control over the residential side. Um, the commercial side is more up and down, but generally, everything that comes in, we bill out. So, um. Well, while there's more flux on the expenses, there's all, we're able to to make it up in in the revenue, um, by passing it on to the, to the businesses. Um. So I would say that 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 fund balances projected to to remain stable or or increase a little bit. Um, we we did talk with waste management about them taking on the billing side of the commercial. Um, we we would retain residential in-house, but hand commercial off to them, um, for them to bill. Um. It would save a lot, it would save quite a bit in staff time, um, messing around with, um.
It's always been a huge.
And I I mean, I I imagine that, you know, if if waste management screws something up, we're we're still gonna get calls um, to to help fix it.
Yeah.
Um, but. I, the the, I think there there is value in in having waste management completely take it over and and be the direct line of. Of contact for, or the initial line of contact for for businesses.
Yeah.
Um.
Um, I will tell you. In Ben, you're in the five percent per year is exactly what. Residential is at there as well.
Yeah.
Literally for the next five years. So it's not, it's not. You should have seen Justin, he flat out told them no. He did, so we're not doing fine, not bringing five to council.
I, okay, I mean, the.
It was Josh's, Josh was staring much similar to what he's doing now. Justin was the one that said it. Justin was the one that said it.
Well, I I mean, with 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 the last contract, I mean, the the. It was uh, four percent over five years, and the reason they they sold that to us is because we rolled out the cart system and they were like. Well, we we have, we have to, we have to make up the the cost of carts. Okay, well, four, four percent doesn't seem unreasonable. In in that context.
But we don't have the cars.
But yeah, we're we're not, we're not pay, we're not continuing to pay, pay you for the, for the cart, so.
Taking a cart makes that easier. Liability is way down. I mean, so, yeah.
All, all, all things that I said, I said to them in the meeting.
Well, there, you know, they're, they come back and they're thinking about, you know, increases in wages and all sorts of stuff, but it's like.
But you're, you're paying less people.
Yeah. And waste management's not hurt. You know. No, look at their, their ticker. Oh, yeah. Yeah, that's the one you just figured. I mean, you guys leave this one thread here. Didn't Zach just say something about that? But you asked, but the 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 question that that's relative to. You and I and the two of us is. If the monthly fee goes from twenty-eight fifty to twenty-nine fifty.
Right.
I I know, but I mean, is it, is it too much? And is it enough? Is it not enough? Is it okay? Is acceptable? And what we had a feedback, I think we get on. I mean, you know, how many people show up at the water sewer reference?
No, I I understand, but I I think. I didn't see. Now, I thought, well, that falls in line, the four percent type of numbers.
Yeah.
Same with the one and a half the next year. So you're not that far off. Increase.
Well. Yeah, but I mean, I I think, I look, looking at the full picture. I mean, if we're gonna raise water rates, we're gonna raise sewer rates, we're possibly gonna raise, raise roads. We gotta look. We gotta. You know.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I mean, the 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 full package answer.
Oh, it comes right out of the same wall. For all of us.
And 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 the the flip side of it is, and one, and in that same vein, um, when usage continues to go down or or.
Yeah.
Doesn't, doesn't meet expectations year over year, then. Yeah, I mean, our our fixed costs are what they are.
Yeah.
And so, and then, you know, you go and lose a a major industrial user like, um, some shore and. All of a sudden, everybody else is is making up for 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 that loss.
Maybe, maybe that's something we need to look at. Maybe, I think we've kind of trained our public. Well, maybe, maybe that's something we need to look at, maybe, I think we've kind of trained our public, um, our residents, um, to watch their water usage. Uh, maybe that's something we need to look at and look at the history of the last five, six, seven years. And say, can we pump another?
Can we do?
Hundred thousand a day, two hundred thousand a day.
Can we? So you suggest them get rid of even that?
What's that?
Get rid of even that?
Well, or come up with something that's manageable. You know what I mean? We know what we can pump, we know our aquifers, we know where the water levels are, you know?
I mean, I. I don't know, but when we discussed a long time ago, along your lines of we're getting less usage. You know, we did bond forty years ago for the for a fixed asset that has never been fully capacited. Right? We've never gotten to the point where we're using, where we get enough toilets flushing so that the plant was running to the asking.
No, we did it with the water.
No, I'm just talking about the source. Yeah. No, the the and so we've had these costs that. We've essentially had to pay for over the course of four years, because there's some time in them to evolve. And never gotten the full bang for the buck on. You know, so. Kind of builds more condo.
And I see. Building the future here and stuff. It's me, that's me, I swear all the time, it's on the thing of like, well, this, I mean, yeah, there are maybe people, maybe. Or Asian. Jump this, can you have that? But then when we start for being teller, it all ends, everything starts to come in, and you start to see that they creep up to a million people and the VQ comes out, or the eagle comes off and says. Need to do so. And we. Because of my mistake, it stands one percent correct. I mean, when I started, it was high. And then we go up every year once I hit around seven hundred, three hundred, eighty thousand pressure, and I start, so they go up morning, it starts to be. Door knockers and whatever, and people. They do, they take it seriously, and they could. It's it's been great, it's something where I moved into heaven, right? People must drink.
Not this guy, isn't there a water only meter?
I took a picture.
I don't, I I've not even used my sprinkler system, I don't even use it.
Listen, I took a picture.
I just prayed for rain.
Send it before you can dance. This is my backyard, not a drop of water, it's like, it's all raining and all the stuff, and she's like, your problem, took a picture of my.
Well, there's not a lot of water so far, I mean, as much as it's been raining, it's crazy.
Over there. Yeah.
Are we already at that? That's where at now?
That's where I'm now. Usually around, it just depends on the. That's what we're both done, like, it's just raining. I mean, okay, well, we were still. Do, but it's the heat is. You started watching temperature.
Yeah, I I mean, late, late June, July, August, those are, those are gonna be our 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 happiest months.
Waiting for the discount on the meters.
When, when we would test the wells at Wellfield. And well, 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 the part, when we, when we check, test those well, those wells. Did we? Go to failure, do we go and say, this is how much they can do, and keep on going up until we get to the point where it starts drawing them down? Or do we just run to a level that we try to get to and call it good? What I'm, what I'm saying is. Could we put bigger pumps in? Could we drill another well in Wellfield?
Now, what they, go ahead.
So there's a thing about the first best.
Sure.
Basically, what it is, is gonna be. We can, with all of our.
All of us.
Running at one time. And you take one versus most out of the equation.
Right.
That's how much we technically put out.
Understood.
So if we go above that, that's when we will come back and say. We need something more.
Right, so what I'm saying is, put another pump on.
That, well, that's, yeah, that's why I'm asking.
Or another well, well, but I don't know if it'll draw down, it'll start drawing down, and we get to the capacity and the well, not the capacity of the pumping.
The wells are too bad, and then the recovery is not bad, well, five can be.
That's a lot by the high school.
That's by the high school.
Oh, yeah, well, five's never.
Oh, well, yeah, it's supposed to be.
Well, it's produced to us, it's produced to a certain spot, they know how much.
They have to let it rest and recharge.
Joe, that's the same without Orion Drive, they they came in originally, they put the wells in.
Yep.
They did draw downs over. Seventy-two hours or whatever, and they figured out how much water we could get out of that, and how much time it was gonna get, we need to recover.
Okay.
You know what I mean? So we're, we're maxed out on.
Okay.
On that.
That was my question, are we at the max of the well versus the max of where our pumps are?
The 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 the. The 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 the. There are, there are enough, there are enough wells out there pumping from the same aquifer.
Yeah, yeah.
We we don't need another pump.
But, yeah. And 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 I, I thought five or six years ago, I I kind of changed, and so. One of the things we used to do is, is because of all five and constantly giving, we limited use. And so we would run two pumps, two nice service pumps, when they called for that set, called leading back. So like a comment, so we were going from. Fifty-five hundred gallons, then a thousand gallons, then out of the, uh, filter. Well. What I did was I took it and put well five into a lot. So now when it's asking for that demand, it's not coming from that out. Instead of coming a hundred thousand pounds.
Well, that.
Third, well, that's all for wells that can. Twenty-five hundred, the man will be as much. So while five is taking the run of that, a little bit, and still keeping the standard range of.
What's going?
It it worked out, but I was nervous to begin, because I didn't know a lot of the back, but. It worked out.
Well, five does not recover like behind very well, so that aquifer is a lot smaller and.
Yeah, no, I'm sure.
We gotta draw down, so our static is around twenty. Sixty, twenty-three, twenty-fifty. Draw down almost to fifty-two, so third feet, and then the top of the screen is seventy, so I was one point. So that's why I came. And I think they said five hundred, do you want to monitor that? Pump back, but, yeah. So I can keep it rolling.
Three hundred gallons per minute?
Yeah. And then.
I was more concerned that I ran into two fifty.
But 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 you should, short answer is, if if we need to pump more water, we need to find another.
Because one through four are at max, they're they're sized up.
We 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 know what the max is. Yeah. And like, I mean, right right now, we're 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 not, we're not encro- encroaching on that max.
We could push it.
We we could.
And they, before I got here, they got someone.
Yeah. Which is.
That's the best.
Yes.
That's, that's the max.
Right.
Because when you're in winter months, we don't lose.
It's good to do that every now and then and see if beetles paying attention.
I mean, we've looked at a lot of property, right? We've looked at a lot of property all over the place, trying to find something. But the thing is. You know, we went to the schools because that was something we could get to. Now, if there was a house near there. We can buy the houses, tear the house down and put it in a well. I mean, I don't know if Sino Township would let us do it.
But I want, there's one for sale.
Which one?
Schools are selling the house.
Good idea. So, but I mean.
It's got a well, I think.
We don't even necessarily have, it doesn't have to be within bounds, we'd have to move it from place to place, but. I mean, if we think we're, I don't know, I'm torn, because if. If usage is going down, it depends, I mean, can we add in, are we gonna offset what's going down? And we have some control, right? Because we can say, no, you can't water your grass.
Well, the best thing for a buck is building houses.
Yeah.
Cause we're hitting the water and we're hitting the sewer at the same time for the majority.
Well, and more to the point, doing the. Uh, that's Milk Creek. Yeah, the Milk Creek. Flat.
Milk Creek Flats.
Pella. Well, not so much Pella, but the, the one that's.
Sorry.
The one on Grand Street.
Yeah.
Oh, the the broads, broads ones?
So, so. Met, uh, so some, some Millennium Place.
Millennium Place and the one.
Milk Creek Flats.
Milk Creek Flats.
Yeah.
But those, right? There's no grass getting watered there.
Like, no, I see.
It's just people and.
That's what I want.
And it's small households, not even big households, so. Oh, yeah. Keep more use.
So the problem with the well search, the biggest problem is, is anywhere that we look, it's. It we either got issues and we can't use that particular spot because it's contaminated. Or when we try to go outside the city, we don't have any documentation that says there's an aquifer there. It's kind of like when we found the fifth well, we got, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
We already previously knew there was something.
Yeah, we had to sit down with Gribley and go through and say, yeah, I'm not here, I'm not here.
I I often wonder if there's a wealth, if there's a aquifer back by Milk Creek where our new pathway is. I'm wondering if there's one right on the other side of Samuel Drive, near the property, is it the? You know?
Well, there's that, yeah.
You know what I mean, there's that piece of property right there that isn't. Where it'd be used for anything. So that the parks on.
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, there's multiple angles we can take for that.
What's that?
There's multiple places we could look, but anyway, it costs, it costs money to look though.
Yeah.
You know? You gotta be willing to build a well and do the dust well and.
Do a well next to them. Have you called? Got a place you can destroy, and you can, you know, you can plant. Um, then you. It usually down, virtually die out there. Static. So. Yeah. And the reason I said that's experience, we went, we went seven, two hours. We did a twelve foot draw on, recovered. Three hours. Like it's just swimming.
Is that good?
That's awesome.
That's awesome.
It's awesome. Yeah, seventy-two hours, sixteen gallons of water.
Ah.
And wait, twelve feet. Right in the same part.
Oh, no.
I mean.
I mean, if it, if another well is a priority, then. Should we? Say on the water funds that we want to allocate X number of dollars to finding another well?
Once we can confirm the cash reserve.
She didn't hear you.
I'm totally supportive of it.
Selective here.
Now, we've been talking about that for a number.
I'm totally supportive of looking for it, you just gotta pick your spot or get, get, right, get them and get a proposal from, what's his name, Waylon?
Daniel.
And. Just, I mean, and let him, let him kind of guess. You know, and help us steer us towards something and then investigate it.
Is there any land near the wastewater treatment plant that we could drill at?
Yeah.
I'd say we've got all that water, okay, yeah, there's the.
The only problem with that is.
It's what's. You're taking up space that might.
Well, it's not just that, but it also, someday they're gonna need to expand.
That's my point, you're taking up space.
I was talking, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
What's that?
Big car. Well, I'm just property. Yeah.
None approved. Maybe wellhouse. Then you're gonna have to have some kind of treatment, if possible.
Wellhouse can be right out there, that little thing.
Yeah, in the building there.
Just move that little building.
I, well, so, so, so I, I think that that's actually where they found the contamination.
They're not. So I think I'd go back, back, I was.
Let's say Tuesday, we talked about the wall there. Well. Whatever problems all there, so.
Let's, let's trust them. With luck. So it's Sloan Kingsley.
They got some little bit of, even if they do, still gotta worry about the parson. Cause that's, that'll be the difference in tree.
Right.
You know, there's a lot of things they gotta do, we can get. Have ours in our system.
Hmm.
Um. That's what I remove, like, moves that, but. That's. You're gonna have to go back and watch the others. Fill it, like, if I know where that's. So.
Have we received any? Sorry, have you received any update from potentially any?
They, 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 they were, they were running tests la- last I heard, or they're, uh, they, I think they had run a preliminary, and then they were submitting a full work plan to Eagle.
What, what was the test, the well?
They, 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 they had, they had installed a small, like, a. Five inch well. Which wasn't. Wasn't gonna be enough.
No, they ran a five inch well for hundred gallons minute for eight dollars. Really draw on. Could like that, I'm like, okay, I'll do that one as well, a twelve sixty-nine well for three hundred gallons minute, for eight dollars.
We need to get the M P M, that's too bad.
He's on board.
As they.
Yeah, he's, he's.
Some direction.
No, he's seen the. So last I heard, it's like. Back, he was contacting the box.
With the five inch?
Yeah. Well, I was gonna say.
Mm hmm. Hey, any other questions?
Um, so. I know, I I just water sewer.
Anything.
Before we call it.
Anything.
Um, so, um. Motor Pool is is in there as well. Um. That's another one that. At some point may need help. Um, we're not. Collecting enough in, um. Um, equipment rental fees from the other funds. To. Replace some of the big, bigger pieces of equipment that we know are going to need to be replaced. Uh, I think we're gonna be okay for the next couple of years, um, assuming that we're okay with with using a little bit of fund balance. Um, we did a contribution from, um, general fund two years ago, I think it was. Um, of fifty thousand, and there there will likely come a point where, where we we will need to have general fund supplement, um. At least a couple of purchases in in the motor pool fund. I, 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 so I I included it in motor pool, I didn't include it in general fund. So I I I I wouldn't.
So, so Justin, when when you gather that money, you're looking at wellheads. I mean, how do you do that?
Uh, so, so you you know how Kirk collected engine hours? So we collect engine hours from all of our pieces of equipment. And that gets charged based on, um, the M dot annual rate. So, you know, M M dot comes out with a, with a, a sheet that says, you know, um, a four by four pickup. You know, for. You know, per engine hour is point. You know, five, three, or it's fifty-three cents per engine hours or something like that. Um, the DPW then goes and collects all the engine hours for all the pieces of equipment and. Um, back charges, general fund, roads, solid waste. For each piece of equipment that they use, based on the number of, um, engine hours that that they've calculated has has been used.
The DDA participate with all the stuff we do for downtown and.
So I believe DDA. Does have equipment rental, uh, uh, in, in, in downtown Public Works, uh, um. General Fund, Department four, four, three.
They didn't have any money when I was. No, I'm really thankful.
Think better.
Oh, yeah, no. Um, but they probably should.
Yeah, I'm not sure with the Indian hours, that'd be. A best guess, how many engine hours?
What's engine hours in the games action stuff, so that's.
But you, but you're also charging the DDA for what we do town downtown.
Yes.
Through, 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 through Department four, four, three in general fund, ba- basically the, the. For most of the stuff that happens downtown. Um, that gets, that gets billed to department four, four, three, and then we charge the DDA. That, the, the amount that goes into four, four, three.
Also, when you forward. It should be a little bit better, I think, though. Uh, maybe, maybe four years ago, or discovered that some of our formulas weren't correct. And, um, so like instead of having a truck and then charging for the cloud too. But just charging trucks, so correct with that. So as we build up over the years, it doesn't help the immediate problem with needing to replace the equipment, but at least the formula is now.
And, and then it should also be better with more people, cause you have more people running more pieces of equipment. Um, the, the last one in here that I think is worth a discussion is, um, special projects fund, fund four oh one. Um, which is housing the bond proceeds for, um. The Public Safety Facilities Project. Um, and we, we had a meeting, um, right before this one. Um, where we talked, where we talked a little bit about where we're at, um, with Cunningham Lim's, um, budget estimates and. It looks like they're, they're still tracking pretty close to the number that we saw in March. I believe they said.
Which is well again, ten minutes. And, but that was. That was based on. I would, was it mid, midpoint of a ring?
Yeah.
So that's, there's a building, soft costs and what was the last?
Well, so, so there's, there's the work at eighty-one forty. Um, there is work here. There is.
By fifteen.
The soft costs.
Yeah.
Um, and then there, and then e- even not included in that is, um, city. Contingency.
Right.
So, oh, oh, owner contingency.
Oh, okay.
Um, David said he, he hadn't included that in, in his one, one point six million number. Yeah.
He had.
Had, had not. Um.
The building was between like eight point one and nine point two or three. And he was going with the number of eight point seven two five, sort of in the middle. Soft cost for one point six six and then the, for the here was five fifty. Over them all up and it came down.
That, that picture was just sent me on the numbers all along.
End point.
Yeah. Um.
But just keep making interest. We'll get there.
Well, so, so you, you'll, you'll, you'll see that I, I included a line in here, um, that says arbitrage.
Yeah.
Um, it's, I mean, based on how much we're making, it's likely that we will hit arbitrage.
We'll just take that out of the budget.
Well, yeah, yeah, well, so, so e- essentially at, at some point. The amount that we're making in, in revenue off of the investments. We won't be able to use it all, it'll, it'll, at a, at some point have to go towards our, towards our arbitrage. Yeah.
The IRS?
Yeah.
Is that an aggregate total of numbers and percentage of bonds?
Um, what's the, how's that?
Yeah, we're, we're gonna have, we're gonna have to, to, to talk to about bond council about it.
Well, if you have a bond council, they all have to think.
What?
I mean, they set it up. This inflationary environment.
Whatever it is, that and with the IRS.
I, I.
Yeah, yeah, it's. But, um.
It's like trying to make less money because you pay tax, but that's dumb.
That's.
It's our first time. Sorry. What is?
Wait, 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 we, we just had a slap, slap on the wrist for our first time, right?
So I mean, it's our first time. I will sit, you'll, you'll have to.
Yeah. Um.
There's a clause in our.
By the way, I'm tiring.
But so, 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 you know, the, there, there, there's some big, big questions there about how we want to make up the gap. What, whether it's, you know, bonding for more or, um, taking from reserve and general fund. The, the other major question is, um. The, the soft costs that were referenced, the one point six six million. You know, that includes the furnishings and, you know, all, all of the, the good stuff that goes into the fire department. And who pays for that stuff? Whether, whether it's us or the fire department or none of the above. Um, so I, I think we'll need to have a conversation about what stuff. We as the city feel comfortable paying for, want to pay for, don't want to pay for. Um, you know, like TVs.
Usually the AFD pays for that.
Yeah. So, I mean, if, if, if. If DAFD pays for a good chunk of it, I mean, we, we still, you know, ta- eat a third of it. But eating, eating, eating a third of one point six six million. Is better than a hundred percent of one point six six million.
Well. Have you seen what goes into that number?
Yeah, yeah, and, and, and.
Breakdown of that?
Uh, there is a list of items that, that goes into that. I don't think it's broken down by. This item has this allocation, this item has this allocation. Um. And, and, and I think in, in the one point six, six, one point six six million includes like the architect's fee.
Yeah.
Um. But.
It's not all.
Yeah, correct, correct.
Lazy boys and.
Correct. So, um, but, but we, we have the list of.
I mean, like the old barbecue still works. About in a new barbecue in year one. That's where.
I, I.
Sign checks.
I understand what you're saying, but the fact of the matter is, I think they need to take everything that's at the current fire station and move it all over. And I mean, just because we're gonna, just be. Okay, I shouldn't say it this way. So. My two kids are both in the process of buying houses. There's been some buying of new furniture and things. But they don't have the budget, right? They just bought a house. So they use a lot of the stuff that my daughter just said to me. We got this apartment, we're gonna, we got enough furniture in here for a house. Turns out they did, and it's all in there. I, I mean, I get it and we. I think we should participate in helping to staff that stuff, but that stuff. It's the main station. It's staffs for everybody. That, some of those costs.
Well, we, we need to get, we need to understand what was hap- what happened when the last two stations were built. Cause there's gonna be some. Likely what, the consistency that DHD would want to do from that perspective.
What do you mean? Say that again?
Well, when the last two stations were built in that township in Wester Township, I'm sure there was a contribution by the fire department of some, at some level. Uh, we should understand. We should understand what those things are and then, you know, see how that applies to this.
It's a good point.
And, and, and I, I, I've.
President's been set at some level.
And, and, and I, I've asked for, I've asked for that. What, what, you know, the townships paid for when the new stations were built as far as furnishings? I, I still haven't seen.
I can push that to that.
Yeah. Okay, well, and I mean, you know, if, if, if they, you know, built the new stations and only contributed fifty thousand worth of, you know, furnishings. And DAFD picked up the rest, that means that. You know, we, the city paid for a third of, you know, whatever was left over. So, I mean. There, you're, you're right, the, the, there, there should be some parity there.
Okay, non-arranged participation?
You had a comment.
Oh, you have a comment? I missed a hand, sorry.
No, I, um, I had, um, I don't want to put it, if there's water, wow.
There, there was some discussion at the last budget meeting about, uh, uh, looking to sell that property.
I personally think we should go back to Mav. And say, do you want it still? And see what they. And then, then you can describe it to the residents. At least they would know who's getting it for what and. Cause, cause the less, the more, the more we can, the more defined it is. More likely I think it would be to pass the question, right? The more undefined in today's environment, there'll be all sorts of speculation and people won't like that.
I mean, we, we, we.
Some percentage.
We, 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 we could also put it out to our RFP that says. Tell, 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 tell us what you would pay and what, what you would build there. And.
See that again, but that's, that's subjective.
Put, 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 put out an R, RFP that says, you know, could, could, could give us a proposal. Well, well, what, what would you pay and what would you build there?
Oh, I see. Like the DHD's been doing.
I, I, yeah, but I, I think the strength, the strength, the strength has to be the zone for a certain type of use or a certain set of uses. I mean, that's what historically when it was vacant, that's what was always, I mean, nobody worried about. What was going there when it wasn't owned by us. So you just have to remind them of the comfort they had when it was vacant.
Right. But in twenty eighteen or nineteen, whenever it was purchased. Right? I mean, it was purchased, when I remember. A similar amount that was paid for a lot were the daycare center.
Right. I mean, the, the most recent activity in that corridor was the daycare center, right?
Right. But the thing is, that was in twenty eighteen or nineteen. I mean, the difference in real estate prices between then, then and now. We just got back what we paid for it. And the M makes out. Well.
That, that's.
And we get half a million dollars to put toward bills that we got.
That's my point.
But, 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 but if we compare it with a, uh, a, a development that occurs soon after.
True, that would generate tax revenue as well. I agree. That'd be great.
Mav has. To me, that's the icing on the cake, but it also becomes the, I don't want that if it's the wrong involvement.
About your day.
Yeah, that's what I mean. You gotta get the, you gotta. I mean, you gotta trust the zone.
Especially with the discussion around the one point six million in soft.
Well, and, and, and we, we are also paying to be a participant in the, uh, in that. Okay, 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 kind of minimum development.
With a dream.
Yeah. Well, it's not thirty, it's not thirty-five thousand, but it's.
It's thirty-five thousand less.
It's, 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 it's a couple of grand a year.
Oh, okay. Not, not arranged participation? Not seeing anyone online or in the audience? So none? So Josh, Josh, we are adjourned. You can stop recording. Thank you.